We're at 6:30.
Dave Ruth is in.
Audit manifest.
Yeah, no.
No. We'll start off with a roll call. Keith McGlue in here. Shane Wells.
Yep.
Amy Hannigan.
Here.
Brian Winslow.
Here.
David Ruth.
Yes.
Can we go around the table and everybody introduce themselves, starting over here?
Ginger Dole Secretary.
Alvin Business Administrator.
Charles Lynn Young Principal.
Adrian Alford Assistant Principal.
Thank you. Our bills and manifests are going around.
Yep.
Okay, um, oh, sorry, I skipped the, first we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have somebody here to lead us in the pledge tonight?
We do. We have second grader Dominic Diffen and his sister, first grader Aurelia Diffen are co-leading the pledge tonight.
Excellent.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
(inaudible)
All right, so bills and manifests are going around.
While we have the representative here, do you want to introduce them?
Sure. So Dominic is in Ms. Cunningham's class, and if there were an award for kindest and nicest student, he would probably be one of the top contenders. A few of the things I've observed Dominic doing, if somebody's carrying something heavy down the hallway, he unfailingly asks if he can help them carry it. One day, a little boy got his head accidentally hit with a block during indoor recess. Dominic went and got the ice backpack out of his lunchbox and gave it to his friend to use for the bump on his head. So he's just a really kind, caring individual. And then Ori is also a really friendly, cheerful addition to our school. Every morning when they come in, they don't just say that they're good, they say they're fantastic or wonderful. They're always happy to see people, very positive members of our school community.
Great, thank you. Board members like to ask any questions, or what's your favorite thing about school?
I like the library because I've read a lot of chapter books, and I finished three of the Captain Nunn two-pantses, and I'm reading one of the Harry Potter books.
Oh.
Very nice.
Tra la la.
(laughing)
What else have we? What's your least favorite thing about school? How about that?
Um...
Go ahead. Both of you can answer, it's fine.
Art.
Art, really?
Is your favorite?
Your favorite.
Oh, art's your favorite.
Oh, okay.
That's your favorite.
What don't you like about school? What's the hard things? Or is it just great?
It's all fantastic.
It's all good? (laughing) I did not have an answer for that. That's great. Glad you guys are enjoying that.
Do you bring your lunch, or do you get a lunch at the cafeteria?
I bring lunch.
All right. What's your favorite lunch?
(inaudible).
Mine is jelly sandwiches.
(laughing)
Um, yogurt and salad.
All right.
Oh.
Good.
Yummy.
You guys know Ms. Medro?
Yes.
We like this, right?
She taught you in kindergarten?
Yes.
She taught me in kindergarten.
(laughing) Okay, now, no fighting. I won't.
All right.
Well, thank you guys so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You made his eyes pop.
Mr. Ruth, I think he believed you.
By winning, right?
(laughing)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Picture you in.
Sorry.
So, everybody.
Everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. So I forgot to check with you guys, we're all set up there? We're all good?
(laughing)
Starting.
A little late for that, but, um, all right, first up on our agenda tonight is an audit presentation by Plodzik and Sanderson. Did I say it right?
Yeah, see, it took me a while to learn how to spell. (laughing)
Sign up the log.
We want to give them a table to sit at?
No, he likes to stand. He did last night, anyway.
Mike Campbell, Plodzik and Sanderson, I'm the partner in charge of your job. This year was the first year that Plodzik and Sanderson had worked with the SAU 44 group of schools. What I'll do is I'll basically give you a quick run-through of the report. Afterwards, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. So, starting with page one, I've refined this a little bit from last night, guys, I practiced, so it's gonna be...
(laughing)
Page one, this is essentially why you hire us. You're looking for an independent assessment from somebody with knowledge, skills, experience, which is myself, on the financial statements as a whole. Are they fairly stated in all material respects? That's what you want to know. That's what your public wants to know. So if you look at the second-to-last paragraph there, it starts with opinions. Financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. That's a clean opinion. You can't get a cleaner opinion than that in governmental accounting. I can't say that I give this opinion on every single job I do. I have a number of clients who don't comply with GASB 34 or GASB 75. That would be the capital assets and the other post-employment benefits. Speaking of other post-employment benefits, you'll notice the last paragraph on that page, change in accounting principle. GASB changed how we report other post-employment benefits, and they've made the liability a lot bigger. Next page, we're gonna go to page nine now, and I'm gonna jump around a little bit, it just flows a little better. This schedule here is a really quick and clean way to see how did you perform your general fund over the past year against your budget. So what you see is the original budget, this is what you would've, as a town, voted on, supplied to DRA, and they authorized. From there, you, as the board, are able to make modifications for various reasons, and then you see how the final budget shakes out. You'll look and see that you had a pretty substantial jump in your overall fund balance at the end of the year to the tune of just under $400,000. If you go through and look at the variance, positive, negative, you see where that all came from. Biggest chunk is gonna be instruction. We're gonna get to that. We're gonna go to page 35 now, this is towards the end of the book, or the report. What this is, is your general fund. It's a little more detailed presentation of the revenue. You can look down and see that, in general, you performed as you expected. Medicaid, you came in a little bit under budget, but in general, you came in pretty much on target. Next page, page 36. This is where you see the change in fund balance occurred. This is a similar occurrence in many districts, is what happens is when you're budgeting for particularly the teachers. You have to be conservative. You're preparing your budgets back in the fall. You don't necessarily know who's gonna retire, who's gonna leave the district. You typically bring in, when somebody retires, you're bringing in somebody at a much lower pay level, unlikely to have a family plan. In some cases, they don't even take the plan for the first couple of years of their employment. You still need to budget for it because you don't know that for a fact. So you're gonna see savings in this area. And that's where you see the majority of your savings coming from, in the instruction of $326,000. Page 37, this is just basically a reconciliation of your fund balance, how you started the year, what contributed to the change in it. You, as a district, had put up $158,000, use of fund balance to reduce your assessment, and then in addition to that, you also had $72,000 that funded a warrant article. And then you see the impacts of your revenue surplus and unexpended appropriations, to come to a total of about $604,000, fund balance at year-end. From there, I'm gonna bring you to page 26, so we're gonna go back a little bit. I told you about GASB 75, and you see the actual impact on it here. Bottom of page 26, note 13, prior period adjustments. Your beginning net position, which is your government-wide financial statements, was hit to the tune of about $930,000 reduction, before the year even started. What that is primarily is New Hampshire Retirement Systems liability related to the medical subsidy that isn't funded currently. What they do is they basically spread it out between all the member entities proportionally. That's basically your proportion at the start of the year.
Is that proportionally based on, like, student population, or on...
No, no, government population, employee population. So you're in the same pool as the state of New Hampshire, the university system of New Hampshire, the city of Manchester, and so on and so forth. So at the end of the day, you'd probably find that your percentage is less than a percent, still about $1 million at less than a percent, to show you how well-funded the retirement system is currently looking out 30 years. They do have a plan to be fully funded, I believe, by 2036. Progress has not been seen. From there, I'm gonna go to page 17, and again, we're gonna highlight the accounting change and restatement. It's note 2C, and you see how it breaks out, and just supports the $930,000 change. So in terms of the financials, those are the pages I really wanted to highlight. I encourage you all to read the financial statements. I know it's not the best read, the most exciting one. There is a lot of good information in there, and it's important stuff, especially for those charged with governance. What I'd like to do now, quickly, is just kind of come over, review some of the findings or recommendations that we came across. We came in at a unique time. You had changed your business administrator. Your finance manager had gone out on leave because of a injury, and I think he was out for a couple of months at least. And then we're trying to come in and do the audit, too. So Bob came in, and he's starting to work, and we didn't help at first, at all, but we did end up getting through it. Some of the recommendations when we got through it were, first, and this has been addressed, chart of accounts. When we looked at your chart of accounts within the GL software, it wasn't in line with the state of New Hampshire's recommended chart of accounts. What that means is that when your finance department is trying to file forms with the state, there's a lot of extra time spent trying to map the numbers to the right location. That's something I think you're gonna find this year goes a lot smoother, because of the efforts of the administration, bringing in new software and then setting it up correctly. Policies. These guys heard this last night, they're gonna hear it next Wednesday, too. As an auditor, what I like to see is that those charged with governance be reviewing the significant policies at least on a rotation of every three to five years. I like three years for no other reason than your terms are three years. So if you're seeing every significant policy once throughout your term, you know it exists. I was recently in a school district and asked them what their ethics policy was. They told me they didn't have one. I had it sitting in front of me. It was sort of a test to say, you know, tell me a little bit about it. A policy is not effective if the people that are either enforcing it or have to abide by it don't know it exists. So my recommendation to any board I see is, review your policies. Review them, revise them as necessary, and adopt them on a regular basis, once every three to five years. Cross-training is another issue I wanted to quickly touch upon. One of the challenges we had was with the key centerpiece, we had, the previous BA had left. The key centerpiece of the audit was incapacitated. It slowed down things on our end. I know it must've been similar for day-to-day functioning of the finance department. Had there been cross-training, you would've minimized that impact on the day-to-day operation. We all know that anything can happen from day-to-day. Somebody leaves, somebody just doesn't show up the next day, you still have to operate. So our recommendation is that cross-training on key functions be performed. It's also, frankly, it's a fraud deterrent, because if you're relying on the same person to do the same thing over and over and over again, there's a lot of comfort there, and who's gonna catch them? So that was a recommendation. Everything that we reviewed, we sat down with both the superintendent and business administrator, and they were fully on board with what we were saying. Sometimes I think it's helpful to bring in a new set of eyes. I know myself, at our firm, we try to rotate our partners every five years, just so there's a different look at it. We take our senior person on the job, and then the partner, and every five years, we rotate them out, just so you get a different set of eyes, just because, you know, you get familiar with it. With that, I've said everything, actually, I have not said everything I've had to say. Page two. Very top part there. Other matters, management's discussion and analysis. One thing you're gonna notice different in this report from the prior year's report is that there is no management discussion and analysis. I had talked to management when I was here, and what I had told them is, in my experience, it's not common for somebody who's coming from an outside organization to come in and prepare a management discussion and analysis for somebody else's work. It's tough to really go in there and give financial highlights if you don't know what happened during that timeframe, in addition to trying to satisfy the needs of the auditor and getting up and running on your own for your new position. So that, with that, it was decided that there would be one admitted. You'll notice it has no impact on your opinion. It will, however, be returned next year, is what I've been told. So if you see that difference, that's why, very standard, anytime somebody takes over the position of BA and they're coming from the outside. It'd be different if it was a promotion from within, they would be familiar with it. It's tough to say that they have the experience necessary to comment on it. So with that, I've said everything I need to say. If there are any questions?
So is this what would be a management letter, or something like that, that we've got to report something we have?
What you'll have, sent to you, is what we call a letter charged to governance. A management letter is when we find material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We didn't find any of those.
Okay.
What we look at as a governance letter is a nice way for us to be able to communicate with those charged with governance, management, and basically share with them some of the, formally, some of the things we came across. And a lot of times, what you'll find is it's recommendations that don't warrant inclusion in the report or in a management letter. We have the opportunity to go across this state to different school districts of varying sizes. We see what works, and we see what doesn't work, and we're able to share that information with our clients.
So the list of recommendations, are they in the book, or they're separate?
They're gonna be separate. They will be emailed to you.
Okay.
I have this. Let me pass this down. It's a letter that basically summarizes the types of things you're questioning about.
Okay.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they may be on the website from last year, so, I'll have to look.
So there's a few things here.
You can keep that.
Can we get copies for everybody?
Yeah.
It's gonna be emailed to everybody?
What is that you have?
This is the kind of the recommendations. These are the things that just weren't high enough to become a management letter, but things that you would recommend.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely, go ahead.
My question on a management letter, I've seen it for so many years, it's almost like, wouldn't it be nice to have a management letter that says, "We don't have any," whatever the technical term, "no problems," but you have a technical way of saying it.
That's why I'm here. That's why, in all honesty, for auditing standards...
Because we have people in town that will be saying, "Where's the management letter?" It's insane if it's so many years.
With that letter, you can certainly share it. What we tell management and governance is that there's no obligation to share it, it's completely up to you. I don't think there's anything in there that would embarrass the school district. It's just a couple of points to consider. But yeah, no, and it was emailed, I believe, earlier this morning to management, and then they will forward it on to make sure you guys get it.
We'll get copies.
Any other questions?
No, I've just, the same thing you had with management, just, yeah, I gotta go through, you gotta go through this, and I wanna get another headache, I'll do it at a different time.
Right.
And that can be emailed to you as well. They both were sent electronically today.
Well, this is how I like it. Electronically.
To each their own.
(laughing)
Any other comments or questions, or anything that kind of board members, anything you guys want to throw out there, or happy?
No, they were great to work with, they were very helpful. There was, you know, at the beginning, a tremendous amount of discussion, trying to figure out where things were. It was a little rough, I gotta tell you, it was my first day, pretty much, as the superintendent, and I'm trying to get myself settled, and I seem to be the only one that knew where things were at that time. So, a lot of digging.
The audit started the first week I was there.
Yeah.
No excuse.
But...
We got through it.
We're ready now.
Yes, we did.
And we're gonna get this done much earlier, we're, this is why we're asking to get all the invoices and purchase orders done, so that we can get on with having everything that Mike's company needs.
Recommendations that you make, which will be good for this board and the other boards, in two or three months, we might say to Barbara, to Scott, "Hey, what are you doing for cross-training?"
Right.
So, something to help us.
Yeah, no, and I mean, to their point, there was a lot of new people walking through that door that week. I mean, including an entirely new engagement team. The people that we had interviewed with weren't even there. So it was, it was a challenge, but I think, you know, looking at it year two, as I said to Scott on the way in, I think it's gonna go a lot smoother. You know, give management a chance to have a full year under their belt. You've got a good team. So just, you know, give them time now to get things done.
Comment, too, I know you said, I forget exactly how it was, but you guys had brought up pretty early in your time here, like, the need to, I'm sorry, I lose my train of thought there, but, the way that we've changed the coding of different line items and things like that, and to hear that again here as a recommendation that's been addressed already, it's nice to hear that.
Let me touch on that. We just completed, I'll call it a, it's not a reworking of the information that you already get, it's making sure all the codes are correct. And the way I did this is I brought all three districts together to address what Mike Camper was bringing up, so that the coding, if you looked at the master list, I'll call it, there's a rhyme and a reason to it, it's then re-exploited into the individual districts so that you have the information that you need. And really, outside of correcting mistakes, there was no change in what your district is doing. Stafford probably will have the most changes, just because, for instance, they never had a discrete high school section. So we're trying to carry out the recommendations, and with the new software, it was the ideal time to just kinda start over.
Yeah, it sounds like things are coming together, and we're hearing that again tonight, so that's great.
Well, we're definitely looking forward to the DOE 25 and just pushing a button and having that populate, rather than...
Yeah, that's part of it.
You know, and I think we pointed out, we're pretty honest to the board, that we found a previous mistake, and we adjusted our fund balance return, you know, to make sure that we didn't have a spike. And, you know, as I look at, you know, the keys on the computer and the mistake, it was a keystroke error, and...
But the more we do...
We shouldn't have to do that, you know?
The more we do to eliminate manual entry of data, the better off we're gonna be around the quality of the work that we're doing.
Fine, take away jobs.
I'm just trying to make mine easier.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Could you spell your last name?
Sure, it's C-A-M-P-O.
That's what I thought.
What was your first name? I'm sorry.
Mike.
I just wanted to be correct.
I appreciate it.
So you don't...
Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else? Mr. Campbell, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, guys.
See you next week sometime.
Yes, Wednesday.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on our agenda, our next, we have any, we probably do have some agenda adjustments, just because I know we didn't get all of the right stuff in. We have, because it was on vacation week last week, I didn't get things in as soon as required in time, but we are gonna be doing our board self-evaluation, so we'll put that in there under new business. All right. And I don't know that we're doing, well, delegating some of the resolutions, we are gonna have that in there, too, so...
That's in there already.
That is, okay.
And then, under me, we're gonna talk about SAU withdrawal.
That's right. And SAU withdrawal, under the superintendent's report?
Yep.
These are things we talked about last week that just didn't get into the written agenda. I apologize for that.
I know it gets a little clunky when I go on vacation, and somebody goes, "Thank you for allowing me to go on vacation, I really needed it."
I was literally out of the country, too, so I was not good about it.
Is the manifest complete?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can bring that over.
Thanks.
We have no business...
No, we came off cycle because of the audit.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll be back in two weeks, I'm like a bad rash. All right, I'll need this.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have no need for initial non-public session. So we'll move on to opening public comment. We have a record.
Ladies, nothing to say.
An above-average amount of public here tonight. I wonder if we'll have an above-average amount of public comment? No? All right, we're gonna have this average amount of public comment.
Let's see, that's my...
Right, right. Any board member want to take something?
Yeah, I got a couple things.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna pass these around. We had a meeting with Haven a little while back, and they're having kids for breakfast on April 5th.
Raising kids for breakfast.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, they got a big outfit. Kids are our business breakfast, let me rephrase that. All right, so they're gonna talk about, I'll just read it. "What if you're told that one variable counts for about 80% of youth suicide attempts? What could we do to change that? Through Exeter Hospital's Youth Suicide Prevention Initiative, Haven provides educational program that addresses trauma, deleting causes of suicide attempts among children and adolescents. So join us for the eighth annual Kids' Business Breakfast and learn about Haven's prevention program for students and teachers to build safer and stronger communities." So it's a bit of a fundraiser for, it's our business breakfast, Friday, April 5th, at Oaks in Somersworth, and Friday, April 12th, at Portsmouth Country Club, 8 to 9:30. So I'll just leave these out, if anybody's interested in going. I'm going on April 5th, and if any other, the public is interested as well.
Okay.
And the second thing is, Dave Ruth is leaving, so I got some cookies. From the country market. Macademia nut?
All right.
And chocolate chip cookies.
Awesome.
If anybody wants one, I'm gonna put them at the end, right there, next to Putin, Putin, Putin guy here.
Yeah, nice. I really appreciate that.
Same right there, right?
Yeah.
They are delicious, especially the macadamia nuts.
Be safer there. You'll be safer there, well, yes.
(laughing)
Chocolate chip and macadamia nut.
Oh, macadamia.
Yeah. They do have a sweet caramel, salty caramel one.
Thank you very much.
And they, or I have them as best.
Adrian, not have any? I'm okay right now.
I'll grab one later.
I'll take a chocolate chip, please, I haven't had supper yet. If I can grab one. Thank you very much.
Chocolate chips, I haven't had supper yet. If I can grab one. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah.
I'm all set, thank you.
If you guys want one.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, although I.
Thank you.
Think at our last meeting, we did talk about cake?
I know.
That's my bad.
Well, I thought Shane was bringing the cake.
Who? Shane?
I thought you were bringing.
You want cookies?
I said cake. That was my bad, I forgot.
Any other board member?
I do, I'd like to take this opportunity again to thank Mr. Ruding for applying for the safety upgrade grant that was awarded. There was some misinformation that went out in a flyer about if it was actually, had been written yet and why not. So I wanted to make it clear that I appreciate that you have written the grants and that it has been approved and that we're waiting on the, the vote of the town to decide what we'll do as a school board with that.
Yeah, do you want to do that now or put it as part of your report?
I mean, as for segues into it, so I, if anybody would like to see in the public that that grant was written, you can go to the New Hampshire DO, you can Google New Hampshire DOE School Infrastructure Fund. And when you get to the webpage, there is a current proposal status for the entire state. And if you click on that and scroll down to SAU 44, you'll see that that grant was written in July and approved on 7/27 of 2018 in the amount of $100,000. If the warrants pass and we're okay, I just need to file an extension, which is pretty common, and we will be all set to go. So the grant is written, I'm not, I, I read the information too, and I was perplexed as to where that came from.
It was written and approved.
Oh, yeah. And you can see it right on the website.
Can you? Or just what you just said?
Yeah.
If it's in my email box, I'll remember about it.
Can you help me copy a link?
Maybe. Or just remind me later and I'll hook up with you.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member? No, all right, we're going to close the public comment session then, and we'll move on to our business. First off, we have our, on our consent agenda, it's only one item, the approval of the board minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes of 2/21/19.
Public and non-public?
I'll second them, I just have a comment on them, nothing that needs to be addressed, but we had talked some time ago, I think, with our, our previous board secretary about referring to all members as by their surname, just as a bit of a formality, which I don't think we need to go and amend the minutes or anything, but there's.
Going forward.
Yeah, just going forward. For example, there's.
I thought that's what I had been doing, but I'll, I'll make certain of it.
I see it.
Yeah, it looks like it's pretty good.
If the first name was left in there, it was because I didn't include it as well as I.
Actually, I didn't see my first name, but I saw a few others, so.
Okay. No, usually I put in Mr.
Yeah, most of them are in here.
Yeah, like on the student service, it says Nate Burns, I said Nate Burns, so.
There is, there is some, I mean, referring to Dave and referring to Shane from time to time, but all in all, I think the minutes are great. And they're very concise and right on point, so I appreciate them, not trying to be, you know.
So while we're on minutes, just to get a little bit more clarification. Do they have sufficient information? Do they have too much information? Should I, I, I've been going on what Suzanne was doing and it seemed like, for instance, with the principal's report, it was pretty much verbatim from what was in the packet, which is what I've continued to do. Is that what you'd like or do you want?
I feel they're perfectly appropriate.
Just, just checking. Very easy, I can make all kinds of changes if I know what.
Thank you for highlighting the motions and stuff too, I appreciate that.
Well, yeah, because I, I remember looking through minutes as a member of the public and not being able to find a motion sometimes. So, so I highlight and italicize.
Yep.
And especially like the paragraph breakout, it's super easy to follow. I think it's, I think it's great, I was just.
And I did reduce the font so that.
Still a little street.
Well, you know, it's funny, it really didn't kill less trees, even though I tried to change the margins to white a little bit, but it's just a little bit easier on the reading.
Yep, no, I think, I think they're great too. So I like the formatting and everything.
Okay, good, thank you. We made a second on the.
I did.
Any other, any other amendments or corrections or anything that needs to be done from these? No? All right, so we have a motion to second, all in favor of approving the minutes as written. All right, motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to our student services report, which I assume you're going to do or we're.
Well, no, I actually flipped him because he came last time and Mr. O'Sullivan had to come tonight, so I gave Mr. Byrne a hall pass for the evening, so we'll do one next time.
We'll do one next time.
Yeah.
All right. And we'll move right on to the principal's report then. Much earlier than she expected.
Good evening, our report begins on page 12. The week before February vacation, we had some fun around here, we had a spirit week. There was a lot of wacky hair and twins dressed up, there were a couple of kids dressed up as Mr. Alfred. A little disturbing, but.
Quite dapper, I must say.
What, what is dressing up like Mr. Alfred look like?
Exceptionally handsome. I don't need to say anymore.
There were bow ties or neckties involved.
Why don't you have a vest? Wait, she actually looked much better than I did.
There was also an air of bewilderment that the children had.
I know my way around now, finally.
And we accommodated the week with the second annual Northwood School Olympics. We had started this last year when there were actual real Olympics to parallel, and it was so much fun, we decided to continue it. And so I really want to give a shout out to our related arts team because they worked hard to pull all this together and it's great to be able to bring our whole school together and have it be fun and appropriate for nine different grade levels and teachers and staff. So thank you to Ms. Hasham, Mrs. Legasi, Mrs. Mon, Ms. Martino, and Mr. Burns for their hard work in planning that. Excuse me. Also wanted to let you know that NAEP was complete. We were originally supposed to be testing on February 13th, but that was a two-hour delay day, so we rescheduled for the 19th. Testing went really smoothly, the NAEP people bring the devices and give them to the kids, so we don't really have to worry about any logistical stuff, they take care of all of that. But there was a fair amount of planning and schedule changes, accommodating students with special needs, work that went into it. So I also wanted to thank Ms. Hilton, Mr. Robert, Mrs. Bonjivani, Mrs. Damaris, Mrs. Alberg, Ms. McDonald, and Mrs. Duffy for their contributions in planning and administering NAEP. And we're all really glad it's done.
Now, do we, do we get a report on that as well or?
We will get an aggregate report, we don't get anything broken out specific to us. A NEASC update, we are plugging away, we haven't done a lot of work in terms of time, but we've spent our time well, so I feel like we're making good headway. The building leadership team has been brainstorming examples of evidence for each standard so that the committees, when they meet, can then look at that and just kind of get to work finding those examples rather than having to, to do the thinking. So we've got a really good list of possible evidence for, I would say, more than half of the standards at this point, and then have also started collecting actual artifacts for the evidence. And then the next step to that would be to amend the narrative that we wrote in the application to fully reflect the evidence that we have and articulate how it is that we're meeting the standards and then also identify areas for growth where we're not quite meeting them yet. So that work continues, we'll be meeting again in self-study committees on March 18th. And I'm going to skip down to facilities update and then I'll go back to NWA. Mr. Tom and crew worked really hard over vacation to get the building shipshape. They didn't have quite enough time to do every single room, but they did most of them very thoroughly and all of them somewhat. We also did our mandatory lead water. As you may know, this year, we're obligated to test water at each source of potable drinking water. So that was done, we don't have results yet, but the testing has been done. The backflow system was tested and is functioning properly, that's tested twice a year. So thank you to Mr. Tom and crew for their hard work over vacation.
Any news on the actuators?
They will be installed March 22nd.
Okay.
Yes, they've been purchased and install scheduled. He didn't want to wait until April vacation because it's helpful for the heating system to still be on. So he'll do it on the teacher workshop day on March 22nd. And then I put together some graphs for you for NWA data. NWA is, as you probably all know, a computer-based assessment that students take two or sometimes three times a year. Everybody takes it in the fall and winter and then some students take it in the spring to measure additional growth. Some teachers opt to give it to the whole class. So the black lines in each of the graphs are Northwood School and the slightly less black lines are national norms.
They look purple.
They were a nice light gray on the original copy. So the first two graphs show growth, how we, how we grow compared to national norm growth. So, for example, in kindergarten, we didn't make as much growth as the norms would indicate. However, in second grade, we made a lot of growth compared to what the norms would indicate. Overall, we're, we're close and, or exceed the norms for growth, particularly in ELA, I mean, in math.
This is percentages, percentage growth or?
So this is, what the norms are is it will say, kindergartners typically will increase their RIT score by 13 points, for example. And so then I take an average of how, well, it gives me an average of how many we earned and then.
So these are absolute numbers on here then?
And then on the second page, these are our just straight scores for reading and math, so again, black is us, lighter black is national norms. So again, we're pretty darn close, we're closer in the straight scores than we are in the growth. And then the final page is the percent of students above the 40th percentile. NWA considers the 40th percentile to be sort of the mark for proficient or average. And so this is a measure of how many of our students or an indication of how many of our students, according to this one assessment, are of average or proficient. In this graph, math is black and reading is lighter black. One of the things that the building leadership team has been talking about and will continue to talk about is, these are the national norms, do, are they representative of high expectations and standards for our students? Given that we are in a fairly privileged, affluent socioeconomic demographic. Do the norms that include inner cities and southern states and the schools in, you know, 95% poverty, do those reflect the expectations that we have for our students? No, but we haven't quantified that quite yet. So we're continuing to work on what our expectations are for our students, what we will consider proficient. But right now, lacking that, we're using what NWA says. Our goal continues to be to have at least 90% of our kids scoring proficient. So we have some work to do, but I think that the advent of standards-based reporting, eventually moving to competencies, and all of the work that we're doing through PLCs, collaboration, best practice, professional development, that we're moving in the right direction.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Historically, what we've looked at is, instead of comparing to national average, we look at like the state average.
It doesn't provide a state.
You're not providing that. I assume that was the answer.
So when we do the SAS results, whenever those come, that provides a state, and so we'll get that.
New state testing?
Yeah.
And, and it'd be raised more of a diagnostic test, right? It's.
Can be.
It can be, okay.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to skip over the curriculum director's report for today as well and move on to policies.
Okay, we're in the second reading, so I'll make, you guys want to do them separately or all together? I have no issues with them.
I, I looked over my, I just have any issues with me, so I don't mind doing them all together.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, I'll read each policy though, policy DK, policy EBCA, policy IHBG, and policy IHBG-R, and policy IJ for approval.
So you're moving to adopt these policies?
Adopt, that's the way I think.
That's fine.
I will second that motion.
Mr. Ruth, we are looking to adopt the policies in the packet.
Yep.
All at once.
Excuse me, I have my allergies.
Fine, yeah, there's one delay, get you caught up.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on these? All in favor of approving these policies as written in the packet? Motion carries 5-0.
Yep. Just to tie back into your auditors, this person, he didn't review the two policies that you need. It's your investment policy and a fund balance policy. So I'm in the process of vetting through to make sure that yours are current. I'll bring those to the policy committee if they aren't. My thought is, and I want the board's feedback on this. It would seem appropriate to make a review and a reaffirmation of those policies every year you reorg me, right? Just make it a standard.
Which ones are these?
The investment and the, and the.
Fund balance?
Fund balance, those are ones the auditor is going to recommend that you review.
Every three years.
Every three years, but if you just make it a standard practice to reaffirm them during your reorg, then you don't really have to think about it, it just goes in your procedure chart and.
You have no problem with that, but I'd like to have all like the B policies in there during the reorg too, so everybody gets their hands on those, but maybe we could do those at the following meeting?
Well, no, you can do them, I mean.
And the Bs are easy, anyway, most of them are pretty short, but. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that, I think getting more policies in is fine. So all the B ones are the, are the school board operation ones, so.
Do we?
What's that, and the ethics and things like that.
The new reorg, do they actually get a packet before they come to the first meeting? Yes.
I think so, I'm trying to remember.
If that happen, you'll know in advance.
Yeah, it's generally a pretty light agenda.
Right. I just don't remember.
It would make sense.
Yeah, it would.
I mean, it depends when, like, you'll be okay with the way your meeting's cycled, but another district isn't okay. They have to wait to reorg until almost April because they won't have the time in between the election and the meetings. So packets won't go to those members because your board will be, you're sitting bored. You, you folks this year are on the right cycle where that's not going to happen. Next year, we'll see. On calendar files.
Any other policy work for tonight? Moving right along then.
Personnel. Report. Number two stipend to positions, Nicole Billcliff as the softball coach and Troy Ranfoss as the baseball coach, both sources of the local operating budget. And the stipends are dictated by your collective bargaining agreement in this case. Correct?
No.
Yes. Isn't this one covered?
Not in the collective.
Oh, that's right.
No, but it's.
I've been here too long.
They're the same amounts from when they were in the CP.
They were the same amounts when they were in the CP.
And the amounts that we budgeted for.
I apologize.
Would they like to approve, make a motion to approve these nominations?
I make a motion to approve the two nominations for softball coach and baseball coach.
Second.
Discussion?
Did they both coach last year?
Yes.
Have we had an inventory lately? They get enough equipment they need to buy anything or is that? Don't want to get shocked when we get the $300 bags.
When Mr. Breger was the athletic director, he ordered a lot of new equipment. So I'm assuming there is equipment there. I'm sure Nicole is probably going to be going through that shortly.
Anything else, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Then, I got a couple things off that I've thought of since. First, renominations for professional staff will be at your reorg meeting, so I have time, if there's a problem, to respond to that. You have an April 15th deadline for your principals and your professional staff of, well, if you don't renominate them by then, then they automatically become nominated. The April 15th deadline is for me to notify anybody of any non-renewals. So an email, I believe, went out today, or it will go out tomorrow, saying, please have this to me, da-da-da-da-da, or your principals will go through it, will take a look and make sure everything's in order, and then that'll go on your next agenda, your next packet, for your nominations for staff.
So that's all staff nominations?
We can, I think you've done it different ways in, in different years. I think generally we do administrators and professional staff, and then we do the pairs and the other staff at the next meeting. Just because it's a lot.
Right.
Reason.
Well, as long as we don't run to those.
Right, you just don't want to miss that deadline.
Yeah.
I don't, we just had a snow day, I just want to put it on the board's radar, that Ms. Young has calculated the instructional time and we may be coming back. Right now, your last day of school is the Monday, the 24th. You've met your hours, you may be able to eliminate that day and be done Friday, we'll come back to you. You know, it could be another snow day and this conversation would be pointless. But we'll revisit that with you, we've already calculated the hours and taken a look at that. Again, we're starting to plan for next year. Ms. Young has done a spreadsheet and is looking at staffing patterns. We may have some issues with student need. We have one grade with 40 kids, is that, with 19?
I don't know which grade you're, they're all around 40.
Yeah, that's right, but within one of those grades, there's 14 identified children and five children that have a condition or 504. Those are pretty hefty numbers out of 40 kids. So we're trying to, you know, figure out what's best right now. We may be coming back to you with, with a recommendation about staffing based on the constellation of the students in those grades. But, you know, we met once, we're going to meet again and we'll continue to work through that. I just want to put that on, on the horizon for you. SAU withdraw, I'm going to read through an outline of the process because as you know, one of your sister districts has a warrant article on for Saturday morning that talks about studying the feasibility of SAU withdraw. The questions come up from Northwood, what does that mean for us? So I'm just going to go through. So I'm just going to go through the whole process and let you know. So if, if the, if the vote is to study the feasibility, then the district has to, the other district, has to... Do you bring peanuts next time?
I know we're going to be talking for a while, so, thank you. It's a good time for cookies.
Nobody can have cookies except for me. So the, the board that's studying the feasibility needs to constitute a committee, and that committee will consist of two board members from that board, no budget committee in that town, so we don't have to worry about that, and then four members of the public appointed by the school district moderator, and then the superintendent as a non-voting member. The planning committee, if created by the annual meeting, will work until the next annual meeting, if created by a special meeting one year for the date of appointment. They need to study the advisability of withdrawal, its organization, the operation and control, and the advisability of constructing, maintaining, operating of the schools within that district. They need to estimate construction and operating costs, not really applicable. They need to investigate financial matters and other matters relating to the organization and the operation of the SAU. They need to prepare an educational and fiscal analysis of the impact of the school district withdrawing on any school districts remaining in the SAU, and a plan for the disposition of SAU assets. If the decision is not to recommend, recommend withdrawal from the SAU, the decision must be submitted to the voters at the next annual meeting, or school district meeting. If the voters agree, the planning committee process ends and the SAU remains as it was. If the voters reject the recommendation, its vote constitutes a vote to create a new planning committee, which starts the process all over again. If the planning committee recommends withdrawal, it must also prepare a plan for providing superintendent services for them.
Sorry, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
So the former committee, the committee works for a year, and then if they decide they want to keep going with it, then they form a different committee?
No, if the voters reject the recommendations, they need to start a new committee and do it again.
Okay.
All right. So if, and now I'm on the, if they recommend.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So a transition plan and timeline with transition budgets and staffing and withdrawal school district signed by the majority of the planning committee. The planning committee's recommendation must be submitted to the state board and to the voters in that town for a vote, as outlined here. The planning committee, let me skip that, they need to have two public hearings. One of those is two weeks before submission to the state board. The planning committee must submit a copy of the proposed plan to the school districts in the SAU, it's informational only, there's no vote taken, and then reviewed by the state board of education. Within sixty days of receiving the plan, the state board of education must review it to determine whether the proposed plan addresses all the statutory requirements and contains the services required by RSAs. If the state board does not think all the statutory requirements have been addressed, or that all the services required in the RSAs have been properly addressed, the state board must note the deficiencies and return it to the planning committee for revision. If the plan does not require revision or is submitted, the state board must promptly return the plan and make a recommendation for or against its adoption. The state board shall not have veto power over any plan once it is resubmitted to the state board by the planning committee. The state board's recommendation to, on the plan must be reported to the school district clerk for a vote of the voters. The state board submits the plan to the school district as the withdrawing school district and publishes a plan at state's expense in media of general availability and usage from withdrawing from the school district, and then it's submitted to the voters in that district, and a plan to withdraw from an existing SAU requires three-fifths of the votes. And then the state board issues its certificate that three-fifths of the voters have voted in favor of the establishment of...
It sounds like they...
A three-year plan, at least.
Well, I think, if you hit the plan exactly as it should be hit and it's submitted, it could be less than, you would have a transition, yeah, so two, but it could take up to three.
It sounds like, what, three different votes?
You have a vote to do it, and you got a vote to accept it, and that vote to do it needs to be a regular majority vote, I believe, and then the vote to accept it needs to be a three-fifths. So at that point, the remaining districts, you know, separate from this, the remaining districts in the SAU would have to figure out, you know, what they need for superintendent services, what they need for staffing services, and how to do that, and that's it.
Couple of questions. One, is there anything in their motion that they want to be a standalone SAU, or they want to join a different SAU? Is that part of their...
No, their warrant article says, shall the school district vote pursuant to RSA 194 C 21 to create an SAU planning committee to study the advisability of withdrawal of the Stratford School District from SAU 44 in accordance with the visions of 94C? So that would be a result of their study.
All right, and you said a lot about the state, but do the two remaining towns have input with the state, like it, it could really hurt us financially? I mean, we might be, might be a problem for the two districts remaining financially.
I don't have a, I don't have a clear answer to that at this time.
And is there anything that the two towns could come up with that says, might not be legal, but I'm just throwing it out there, that they, they cannot entice anybody that already works at this SAU to go to their SAU and work?
Well, I don't think you could do that, right?
You could try this, but okay, I just, I think...
I mean, you've got fourteen staff at the SAU.
If you have a job, some, not you, but I mean, if some, some companies, you have a job and you, you can't go to a competitor.
Right.
All right.
You know, it'll be a long process.
So they're just starting out by looking at and seeing how much it's going to cost?
Maybe. Saturday morning, they need to vote.
If they vote, so if the people say no, that's it?
Right.
Can they, they can come back and try again next year?
Yeah, yeah.
Just history, I think Nottingham did it probably over, I'm going to say twenty years ago.
Two thousand and three.
Well, two thousand and three, and then I think Northwood studied it somewhere between then and now.
Yep.
And both times, both times thought it wasn't worth it to move, and we even tried a proposal again, probably like in two thousand and twelve or something, and the town just didn't even want us to do it, so, so, I don't know.
And, you know, I don't think that this is a bad process, and it's their turn, right? From what I just heard. I mean, it's a good...
Well, maybe the two towns could vote to charge them more money if they kind of, if they want to come back in.
Does that mean you...
Because that would help.
They would love being in the SAU.
So how does it work, is there, do you have any insight as to if, if they were to separate and want to come back, or if some other district wanted to join SAU 44?
Well, interestingly enough, I have a letter for your joint board pa, I have a letter for your joint board packet from a school district who is splitting, and they are asking if SAU 44 would be interested in providing their SAU services, so you'll see that at the joint board.
Can you give us a preview?
Well, the letter was from Dr. Gudowski. So...
That doesn't...
It's the Rollinsford and Somersworth. Now, that's a, it's a little hard to have an SAU with a geographical break in it.
You'll get your frequent flyer miles up pretty good.
Right, oh, then the mileage discussion will go up. Well, you had, back in the day, you had Milton, Wakefield, Farmington, Middleton, Northwood, Nottingham, Stratford, Barrington.
Yeah, there was another one.
A tiny one.
When Bruce Stile, there were twenty-six towns. That's how long he's been on school board.
The issue is, is that back in the day, right, so this is like before special education law, this is before, you know, all the reporting that we tell you that we do, that we only tell you about half of it, the, the workload in reporting has increased, right? Your, like, audits have become tight, you know, they used to do audits on like ledger sheets, and now, so you're, it would be difficult, I mean, I think your biggest right now is Exeter, right, SAU sixteen, enormous. So, yeah, you had an amazing amount of towns in this SAU way back when.
All right, thank you.
The other thing, I just wanted to say that, you know, during budget season, I wasn't able to get into the building very much, and I think everybody knows how important that is to me, to, to be in the building and, and see what's going on. There was a benefit to that because I did all, I toured all three schools on Tuesday? Yes? Yeah. And I, I have to say that in the lower grades, when I was walking through, I actually saw wind time, and I saw such an improvement in delivery of wind time and coordination that I was, that I was very happy to see that. So it was like I took a break and went back and then got another look at it, so I just wanted to compliment the school on, on the progress that, that I believe they're making. You know, again, the hallways are, are quiet and orderly, and it just seems like the school has changed, it was nice to see that again, and I wanted to thank the staff for their hard work.
I'll go with that, thank you.
And I think that, unless you have any other questions or things you want to talk about, I think that's it for me.
Any questions for the superintendent, related to his report or just in general?
Any need for, want to talk about tonight?
We will.
Couple issues.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to new business then. In our packet, we have the NHSBA delegate assembly resolutions that passed. I don't know if anybody wanted to talk about these, or just kind of for our information.
I just put them in there just so you had a copy of what happened, but why don't I tell you what I'm hearing? That there seems to be some disappointment, at least in the districts that I talked to today, at Southeasters, from board members around the resolutions about weapons. So there's still some discussion about that, but to update you, the legislature has addressed this, and it'll be going to the governor, I believe, I don't know if it'll veto or not, so at least the legislature is responding, and I think, you know, I think it's tough for the school boards association when you're talking about something like, like weapons and carrying, because clearly our state is very split, and their job is to sort of represent everyone. So was that your sort of feeling when you were there?
Yeah, they just didn't want to go against, make a decision against what is already the fragile law, you know, so it was like...
Right.
There were some wingnuts out there that, I guess, they, you know, the legislator, what was it, one ninety-sixth or something, I forget what it passed, so I guess I'm, no, it's weird, I, I never thought they were, it would pass that, it crushed.
What was that technical name of the people?
Wingnuts?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what I'm putting in the middle.
Discussion about the resolutions occurred?
Just leave it at that, discussion about the resolutions.
We understand them...
A lot of history in the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, these are the NHSBA recommendations, I mean, like you said, as you said, that people were hesitant to go forward with things that were not congruent with current law, but I think a lot of the point of the NHSBA is to try to influence the law and influence legislators, and, you know, often when the bills come up in, in the state house, they're one of the people to testify, so having, you know, having some of resolutions that are counter to current law is probably good, I think, you know, it gives the opposition to, to advocate for when things come up. I mean, perhaps these are not the ones to be doing that with, that's fine, but I don't think it's a bad thing to have resolutions that are not congruent with current law. So I don't think I want to say about that, you know.
Yeah, your, your legislative services from your school boards association, and those, New Hampshire School Administrators Association, and the New Hampshire Association and special ed directors, they are in those, they are lobbying.
Right.
Robustly to advocate for everybody, it's been, you know, a lot, we talk about boards and we talk about superintendents, generally they agree on, on, on matters like, like that. So that's, those are really your delegate assembly notes, and I just put them in there for your, they were emailed and they were asked that I put them in there for you, so...
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Are we on new business still?
We are still on new business, I have an addition...
Okay, go ahead, I just had a question afterwards.
All right, because the next thing's going to be big, so if you have something, what are you looking for?
Just as I read a letter in the, in the paper about how Mr. Hannavan had come down and visited with one of the grades, I'm going to say fourth grade.
Fourth.
And about some of the things, he was talking to the kids about trees and different things. We have, or we did have, a nature trail that was built years and years ago, is any, is it still being used or being maintained? The kids used to go out there with different classes and...
Cross-country trail, yeah.
It's all gone, it's all gone.
Yeah, that's the only trail I know of.
They used to have trees tapped.
So it's the cross-country trail now, but yeah, Sugar Mama, Sugar Mama used to come out and tap the trees.
Yeah.
And then she would give lessons on those, that hasn't happened, I don't think, has she come?
Years, I think years, yeah. Maybe it's thought around, science teachers or something, maybe there could be interest, I don't know.
That's all.
Let me hear a big discussion. Sugar Mama. Deb Clark, was it Deb Clark?
Oh, I was like, what? Deb Clark does that?
Yeah, they don't know.
Right around.
They haven't been around long enough.
No.
She's on Ridge Road.
In the corner.
I live on the top of the hill, but...
Heritage Turkeys.
Okay, so next thing on our agenda for tonight is our, our board self-evaluation. We have a couple handouts that we should refer to, one of them is policy BA-R. And the other one is our, a copy of our goals at least at the beginning of this year, I don't know, I think we got them done in April or so. So what I would like to do is go through both of these and give us, give ourselves grades, let's look at what we had set out to do, see how we did, and this is, this will be useful for those of us remaining here for next year when we're setting our, our new goals for the following year. Yeah, we can go through pretty quick on these, I think, they're really not that terrible. For the Northwood School Board goals, maybe we could just give ourselves grades, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, you know, classic, the classic ones for each top-level category. If you guys don't mind, let's start with the Northwood School Board goals for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We'll get warmed up with some, some letter grades for, for these. So our first goal is to establish and maintain staff and administrative consistency, there's some concrete ideas listed here. I think for the most part, I think we did a good job with this. I think we didn't really get, we didn't really implement all the ideas that we had thought about at the time, like we were going to have kind of a office hours type thing in the school, we never, we never got to, so we didn't knock it out of the park, I don't think, but I think for the most part, the rest of the stuff we did pretty well on, I mean, we did go through exit interview data, and I think we'll be doing that again. Evaluate the salary schedule compared to other communities is not something we kind of did, so that might be something.
Maybe during more of a downtime, kind of, time of year.
I was thinking, would that be coming up during contract negotiations, though?
Right, yeah, probably, and then maybe it'll be more important this coming year because we will have teacher evaluation, the teacher contract negotiations coming up this year. So my initial guess at this one, I'd say maybe a B minus, or something like that, does that sound reasonable?
I was going to say B.
A B?
I was going to say B.
B?
B.
B, all right, so we'll do, we'll get our B on that one.
Okay, so you're going to be using letter grades as opposed to this kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Second goal, ensure the educational success of students. So the concrete ideas here, establish a rule to measure student engagement, staff culture. Encourage staff and administration to creatively experiment, explore diverse or localized approaches to improving student incomes. Establish and execute schedule for reviewing core curricula and evaluate a system of professional development and identify ideas for improvement. What do, what do we think of this one? I, the only thing that sticks out to me is that we did create a schedule for reviewing core curriculum. I am not so sure we did much of the other things.
Well, no, I did provide you with sample rubrics for student engagement, so you could begin working. We did begin working.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
C+? Or C?
C?
Yeah, C.
Oh, good, all right. Look to improving next year. Improve communication with community. Regularly write, distribute a board newsletter. Schedule town hall-style listening sessions for the community to discuss issues with the board. Support the revamp of competency-based report cards and develop a policy that dictates and facilitates community access to school facilities.
Three out of four, is that?
Yeah, three out of four. I mean, I think we did have a regularly scheduled newsletter. It wasn't frequent, but we did have a couple of them, so that was good.
Working on quarterly?
Yeah, that's fine. We did have a couple listening sessions, at least for the SRO officer and things like that. We didn't have a regularly scheduled one, but.
Yeah, we listened to Joe last night.
I heard him at home.
Competency-based report cards we're working on, so I think we did pretty well on this one.
B+?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Input? From you?
What?
Any input from you on any of these?
No, I'm excited because I think you hit the next one out of the park.
Feel free to jump in. Ensure the safety and security of pupils in school. So exploring the possibility of having SRO, commission engineering study, support teacher security training.
So I think it can be an A, but we gotta wait until after March 12.
Well, I mean, it's what we can do. I think we've done what we can do, right?
Control how they vote.
Well, we can influence, but.
Look at you.
With the cookies.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
You're exploring the possibility of having the SRO. You've done that.
Yep.
Commission an engineering study. You did that. Support teacher security training. You've been doing that.
Yeah, we did an A.
A.
I give you an A.
A? You guys, we get an A on this one?
I think so.
Shane?
A-, minus.
We're gonna go with A. It's not an A+, there's still room for improvement.
Well, then we get to carry it.
Right. Prepare a responsible proposed budget for the 2019-2020 year. Summary that increases accountability, makes materials easier to understand. Focus on tax impact and explore strategies to avoid drastic changes.
Yeah, I think we did both of those pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, one thing we wanted, and I think we could make our budget summary better still. I think our budget summary stuff is still little to be desired, and that is coming, I believe, with the new software and stuff.
Right, because you'll be able to, although you're gonna have to show me how to do this. But you, with the new software, you can create pivot tables and charts out of there.
Can the town borrow that, too?
Take them for $68,402.
Per user.
It's used after, but by May, it'll be all used up.
I will say that you've undertaken that. I think your PowerPoint presentation was, was pretty informative when it came to the tax impact and explore. And you took action when you found an error to stabilize the tax impact, right? So.
I'll emphasize again, your PowerPoint presentation left no question unanswered.
We only looked at it 17, 18 times.
It's winning by default. Yeah, I think we did pretty well with this. I would say, I don't think we knocked it out of the park, but I'd say a solid B+ at least.
I'll go A-, minus.
A-, minus. A-, minus is fine. Become more familiar with policies and operate in a more policy-driven manner. So adopt policy regarding the regular review and assessment of the implementation of the strategic plan that I think we missed on because we never actually adopted the policy. We did put it in our, in our packet and regularly went over it, that's good. Continuously identify areas where policies are inadequate, missing, or unnecessary and revise them. Delegate research and recommendation work to committees before being brought to the board and enforce a waiting period for issues brought before the board before voting. What do you guys think? I don't want poison the well.
Well, with policies, basically you're doing your updates, right? The school boards association has identified a deficiency based on a change in the RSA or practice, and we bring it to you as part of those spring and fall updates. That's the positive. The issue that I see is that there's so many policies, right? That we need to become more efficient, and I'm seeing that. Like tonight, it was like, you've already reviewed them, you did them, you put them in, now we can move on to the next set. Is doing those spring updates and those fall updates and at the same time trying to review and reaffirm gets cumbersome, but you're making progress.
Yeah, I think when we put this as a goal, one of the things, at least I had in mind at the time, was that we would be kind of doing a more customization of our policies for our own district, right? Right now, a lot of our policies are simply copies of the NHSBA recommended policies and things like that, which for legal reasons is good, but, you know, we are a unique school, we're all unique snowflakes, right? So, I mean, we should have our own custom policies for things that we care about. We are moving forward with one of those.
And you do.
We have one now.
Modified KF, right?
Yep, yeah, I think the.
Access to.
Access facilities.
We modified the weapons on school grounds. Custom there. So you have, you have done that.
Yeah, you'd have to say, what percentage of all our policies, that big book? I just basically narrowed down to just us. I mean, you're gonna have the, three quarters of it gotta be all state mandated things, so. You know, maybe you could make a goal of saying, every, every week we do policies, we have to have at least one that's gotta be just concerning us. Because sometimes we get involved in doing a lot of just.
We do, yeah, it's a lot of work.
Make sure that we do at least one.
As far as the committee work, I mean, I feel that we could do better with that as well. Like I think a lot of times we discuss facility stuff here rather than, you know, having the facilities committee bring it to us. I think that'd be a better way of using our time in these meetings. So I think improvements could be made there. I think we've done okay with that, but not, we could be more aggressive with that kind of work. Anyone want to throw out a grade?
I think B.
B? He's a little higher than I would have.
You were gonna go higher?
No, I was gonna go.
Oh, you think, okay.
I thought B-, minus.
What do you two think?
B-, minus.
B-, minus?
Yeah.
The last two seem to be.
Yeah.
And let me explain, enforce a waiting period for issues brought before the board before voting.
So that was my thing. I went to, I went to a training and one of the things that I really liked was a recommendation that people had that other boards used, which was that any issue needs, you know, we call it bake time. So if something comes up, if there's a decision that has to be made, it goes on the agenda as a discussion, right? And it's like, all right, here's, we're gonna talk about it, and then we will not vote on this until the next meeting. Right, so the discussion happens, then you have, it gives the board members time to sleep on it, bring it back to the community, do whatever, and then we'll, we end up voting on it the next time, maybe with a, you know, smaller discussion, but. And the idea is that just, it makes it just more deliberate, deliberate, you know, you're not, things you know. Things aren't popping up on you, right? Sometimes some things come up.
You're not making rash decisions.
You're not making rash decisions, exactly.
So you can make a policy about that.
I think that'd be great. I like making policies. I think you should wait and vote on it.
Yeah, I think it's way too weekends to vote on a policy.
Right, well, of course. And then we have a second reading of the policy, so yeah, that's, that's the type of thing.
That's built in.
Right, it's the type of thing I like. So I think we've done a lot better at this, at that kind of thing this year. I know in previous years sometimes, and maybe it gets a little crazy at the end of the year sometimes, where it's like, hey, we need to make decisions on what we're doing with the spending at the end of the year with the surplus funds and stuff like that. We haven't come across that, and that's, that's good. But again, it's not the end of the year yet, so who knows?
Right, and you'll be doing that earlier anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
We have to.
To make that happen, really, really, we really rely on you guys being able to predict things ahead of time and not, you know, have spring stuff on us on the last, at the last second, you know? To see it coming, get it on our agenda, you know?
It'll be interesting this year because you, you know, you sort of have to wait till next week, right? For, for me and Mr. O'Sullivan and Ms. Young to sit down and say, okay, we've decided, you know, this passed, so we need to do this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or if we have to work with the default budget.
Default, or the warrant passes, where's this coming, you know, you know where it's coming from, but now we gotta reduce it, you know, so. Get ready.
Yep, yep.
But you can always leave yourself an out, whereas if something comes up or some, especially somebody like me says, yeah, I'd like to discuss this, and you say, okay, we'll wait till the next meeting. But if I say I want to vote on it, maybe the other, the rest of the four of us would want to say it, do it tonight.
Oh, sure.
So there's always an out that we have, so we don't have to always wait.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, we could have a policy and then we could over, you know, have, even written in the, in the policy, we could say that the board can, with a majority vote, you know.
The board can do on everything, anyway.
Yeah, right. That we could revoke the policy like that in the meeting if we really wanted, I think. I don't think, I don't think we have a policy saying we have to have second readings and such for policies, right? There's nothing in the law about that. If we want to, we could revoke the policy today, right now, right?
I mean, yeah, if you need to. I mean, the reason you want to have a first and a second reading is so people have an opportunity to say.
Absolutely, I totally agree with that, yeah. I'm just, I'm just wondering, there's no legal thing saying we have to do that, right?
You can adopt the policy immediately, especially under emergency circumstances.
Okay, so. Okay, so let's move on to policy BA-R evaluation. This may take a little longer. In this one, according to the key, it's four inadequate, one is poor, two is inadequate, three is adequate, four is good, and five is excellent. We can go along with that, or if you guys really like the old-fashioned letter grades, I don't think anyone will kill us if we do it that way either. But since it's already written in here, I'd say, let's just go with those numbers. I'd say let's just go down one by one and draw suggestions and see what happens. So relationship with the superintendent. Oh, these are supposed to be individual composite ratings.
Well, you got both. The idea, I think, behind this when they first did this was individual would rate them at home.
Yep.
As an example. And then you would come in and you'd come up with your.
Yeah, sorry to be. So let's do this. Want to read, want to read each one? Quietly to yourself, write down your individual rating in that slot. And then when everybody's done, we will discuss it, come up with a composite rating. Does that make sense? Does that work?
Yeah, or we can just read ourselves and just do it.
Do you want to just go through all of them right now and take a few minutes in the meeting and put everybody else to sleep? That's the only thing. Everybody will be sitting here watching us do work.
We can take a break.
Wash the paint dry.
What do you guys argue? That's fine, I don't care either way.
Yeah, I think it'll just go faster if we just like did it ourselves.
All right, so.
I'm gonna get some cheese.
All right, we'll do that then, so everybody else can take a break. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna come back into session. You guys ready? Got your homework done?
You want my guess? Which I don't have today.
I'm not done, but it's fine.
You're not done?
They started talking about diets, and I started listening, and I got distracted.
Do you want me to calculate averages?
Nope, we will.
We're gonna give them to you and you'll bring them back next week and tell us the score.
There you go. Nope, we'll do it by, we'll do it by consensus unless you have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Here's what you do, when I went to school, you'd pass all the papers around, so I'd correct his and she'd correct mine. Don't you do that anymore.
No right answer here, did you?
Each one, I will like that. Each individual's score, and then we'll have it written down so that you can get the average real quick. How's that?
I can probably do it in my head.
Probably could.
All right, let's go. We're not, we're not gonna average them anyway. We're gonna say, what do we agree upon? So, I mean, if we don't agree, we'll vote three to two, whoever wins. I mean, it's a, that's how we do things, right?
The chances are you're all gonna be the same.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem. All right, start with, how many do we have? Fifty-four. We'll have to go quick. Establishes written policies for guidance of superintendent and the operation of schools. Why don't we just go around?
Four.
Three.
Four.
Three.
Four. Three point five.
Two and a half, there, right? Let's, let's not go any less than halves.
Put that down for all the rest. What's that thing you do for the agenda and thing we.
Is that an agenda? Is that right? Provides superintendent with clear statement of the expectations of the performance of personal qualities against which he or she will be measured periodically. Four. Four.
Five.
Oh, God, I said three, but I, it was one of those ones that I was like, I don't know.
I put three, four, so.
Three, fours?
Sounds like four.
Four. One, zero. Do you guys mind if we ask the superintendent, because a lot of these will, if I, you know, relate to him as well? Provides superintendent with a clear statement of the expectation of performance and personal qualities against which she will be measured periodically. Do you think that happens, or do you feel?
I think it's a three.
You think that's a three? So you think it's lower, so.
Well, I think you need to do some work with your tool.
Yes, you're right, that's a mess.
Which isn't your fault?
Yep, but no. I, you know what, I didn't think of that. I'd be convinced that three is, three is adequate, so maybe it's not even.
So three?
So you guys had three?
I had three.
You had five.
Yeah, I thought we had a, I'm not gonna argue to, we have fifty-four to get through, but I thought we had a, a tool in place that was clearly communicated and that we were using, so. It wasn't a great tool, but we had one in place.
Three, three point five then? We need to get us closer? You okay with that?
Sure. I'm just like, gonna think this is gonna take like two hours.
Three point five. We'll go with that for now.
Okay, sounds good.
Engendered confidence in the superintendent by inviting communication from the superintendent.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Four point five.
Four and a half? Four and a half. Reaches discussions only on the basis of study of all available background data and consideration of the recommendation of the superintendent. Mr. Wells?
I couldn't come up with a.
Okay, I did four.
I did four.
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 I had four.
Request information through the superintendent and only from staff members with knowledge of the superintendent. I did five, I think we've been.
No. You gotta crap my score in half anyway, right? I've only been here half.
Absolutely.
Five.
I had a five.
Five.
I said four, but I'm more conservative of those answers.
That's fine. We'll go with five on that one, though. Provides a climate of mutual respect and trust, offering commendation whenever earned and constructive criticism when necessary.
I had a five, I think.
I have four.
I actually gave us a five.
Five. Four.
I think it's a five.
Five, so you guys want four and a half or five then? I'm leaning just towards, I think we could do better with some of this. I think we could do better with.
Four point five.
On both, on both, on both aspects of this, so. Four point five. Matters tend to alienate either board member or superintendent are discussed immediately rather than being permitted to fester and deteriorate.
Question mark.
Yeah, I put it in.
I was like, we don't, we don't have really issues like we used to.
Yep.
Festering.
Festering.
Next meeting you'll have some alienating, maybe.
So, NA?
Either NA or excellent, but I'd say NA, just because it hasn't really been an issue, so.
Unless we're just letting it fester and we're not talking.
Right, right, well now's the time to bring it up. Provide opportunity and encouragement for professional growth of the superintendent.
I do a five.
Five, yeah.
Five.
I said four.
I said four, too. What do you, what do you think? What do you think on this one, because? Are we doing this, or are we not? Are we doing a good job? Are we doing an excellent job?
I think you're doing a good job, every time, you know, I, I, when I, when I want to do something, it's never not been supported, right?
All right, so.
I mean, largely in control of my own, but, you know, when there's, I'll give you an example, the, remember the district administration membership that we put back into the budget at the joint board? I mean, that was a supportive move, this is gonna benefit everybody, but.
So, so five then?
Sure.
Provide time for the superintendent to plan.
I think he needs more time to plan.
So.
I gave a four.
Four, I did four.
I did four.
I did three slash four.
Three, four.
Thirteen, thirteen hours a week, isn't it?
Four.
I don't know, he's never complained to us that he needs more time, but I figure we're giving him.
By the question here.
How he gets enough time, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Right. Well, it could be two. I would, I would like to hear your opinion on this real quick.
Do I have time to plan?
Yeah. Do we provide time for the superintendent to plan? What is your opinion of that?
I mean, I think I provide time for, I know, you know what I mean?
Well, then, okay, so then we're doing, then we're doing a good job supporting that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not hindering you as.
Right, right.
We're not like adding to your load.
Right.
No.
All right, so four on that then?
And if I, you know, and I think I'm pretty open if I, like, in an email today, I was like, I don't know if I can do that, you know?
All right, takes the initiative in maintaining a professional salary for the superintendent comparable salaries take a similar responsibility in and out of profession. Who else?
Four.
Four. I did four.
I had four.
Four.
Four, nine, I'll do four on that.
One question.
Number eleven, encourage attendance of citizens at board meetings.
Two.
I think we do a fine job encouraging it, I just think it doesn't happen. I mean, I, I gave us a five on this, I'm always asking people to come to meetings and stuff at least, but.
He gave us a three, only.
Because of the effort, yeah, I guess we could do better, because people don't show up, so that's a good point.
People don't show up because they agree with what you're doing, and they don't have issues.
Yeah, because it's boring, because we're, we're productive and.
I said, yeah, but I usually encourage people when they catch me outside and have a complaint or something, or, or ask a question, even in a good, say something good or bad, I'll say, hey, show up at the meetings and let us know.
So, all right, we're kind of split here, but you wanna say, I mean, three adequate then?
I like it.
Yep.
I said three, you said five, I mean.
Yeah, but you know what?
Four, three.
Four?
Yes, moving on.
I think we're doing an adequate job, I said five, but now, and thinking about it, and hearing your opinions, like, I'd revise that down to a three, and I think if we're doing an effective job, people would be here. Right? And so I think we're not maybe doing an effective job, so I'd be convinced to do a three.
Okay.
Yeah?
Sounds good.
Actively fosters cooperation with various news media for the dissemination of information about the school program.
Yeah, I have a question mark, because I don't really think that the school board does it, I would think we give that job to the SAU, to be a speaker for the school, if there's a problem. If Channel Nine showed up outside, I would say, go out, you contact the superintendent.
Or me, though, too, they would talk to me as well.
I think what they're looking for here is fostering, right? Do you have a relationship with the press? Not, you're absolutely right, if there's a problem, yeah, I'm gonna be the one.
I mean, we, we do with, with the forum, for sure, right?
Well, reading it as your interpretation, then I'd say, yes, we do, because we're.
Four?
Yeah, go see the superintendent.
Right, four.
And our limited, you know, options.
Always fine.
I had a three plus.
I had a three.
I had a three, four.
I'll find one for.
So three point five? I mean, three and a half, that would be.
Sure.
Three and a half. And share a continuous planned program of public information regarding the schools. Uh, I think our newsletter qualifies for that, so at least, at least a three, yeah, but three point five.
I put three.
Well, then all of our meetings are public.
Well, that's, yeah. Public information, but this is more of like pushing out, I think, but, three point five, work for everybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
Participates actively in community affairs.
I think the school, uh, school board, yeah.
Three, I did two. I did two, I think we could do better, like, we don't go to, we don't do a booth at Beanhold Bash, or something like that, you know, which is what we could do, you know?
As like an organization, as like being.
As an organization, right, right, we don't really reach out to community, I think we just come to these meetings, do our stuff, you know?
I give us a good mark.
But aren't we like not, we, I mean, we're not supposed to sometimes.
We've had a couple of community events to last, through the month of January, and we've had at least three quarters or four quarters of this board showing up at community events we have, fishing and.
Yeah.
Sledding, I mean, again, it's.
Right, I mean, but it's not with a school board hat on, I mean.
Right, right.
Yeah, we could do better.
You can't.
Yeah, so, sorry, where were we then? I mean, I, I did two, but.
I did three.
Are we doing an adequate job then? Or not an adequate job?
I guess not an adequate job before as a school board, I don't know.
Two and a half?
Yeah.
I'd say high, but that's okay.
Sure, two and a half.
All subjective, is that the right word?
Yeah, it is, yep. Channel all concerns, complaints, and criticism of the school system through the superintendent for study with the expectation that he, she will report back to the board if action is required. Four.
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 I said four.
Wow, we agree, let's go, next one. Protects the superintendent from unjust criticism in the efforts of vocal special interest groups.
Who is that superintendent?
I gave a four.
I said four.
I always.
I did three, but it hasn't really come up too much, actually.
Yeah, we haven't had to.
It came up recently.
How do you feel, Mr.任?
We haven't, we haven't.
I was gonna say, how do you, how do you feel on that one?
We haven't dealt with it yet.
Well, well, I'm reading these sometimes it says school board, but I'm reading them as me, so, I mean.
Okay.
Somebody says something to me per, outside, or even if they were sitting here, we defend them, but.
What did you think?
There's a whole board, I don't know.
Still think we have a lot of experience with that, yeah.
Yeah, thankfully.
Yeah, hopefully never.
Let's go.
We're protecting you, we're not letting you know what they're all saying.
Let's go adequate then, right in the middle, right, we're doing an adequate job, we're not, hopefully, for what's happened so far, we're doing an adequate job, so three. An individual board member does not commit himself to a position or answer an inquiry in public statements unless board policy is already established and clear, or the question addressed to him or her requires merely the recitation of facts about the school system.
Was this designed for somebody?
I don't know where this came from.
Yeah, that's a four or five.
I, I have five, I think we're doing a good job with that, like, we're not speaking out for the board, so, five. Encourages citizen participation in an advisory capacity in the solution of specific problems.
Read your strategic plan. Think about your strategic plan process.
Yeah, but we didn't like, we didn't pull people in necess, we did necessarily for the construction.
School board's gonna be freaking.
Which maybe we should have. Maybe, I don't know, security.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, three.
I don't know if that's public expertise, you know? We brought in our opinion.
Four, I'm sorry, what were your scores?
Four.
Four.
Three.
Three?
Four.
So three, three threes and two fours, three and a half?
Five.
You said two point five?
Three point.
Three point five. Throw me for a loop. Is aware of community attitude and special interest groups who seek to influence the district's program.
I, I gave a three, because I ignore those stupid people.
Four, I did a four.
I think four is.
I said four, because you're aware.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen, I, because I don't have children in the school, but I've been with all you guys out in the pub, and I see how the, you, the communication between the public and all, everybody here.
So four, okay.
If you're not thinking it's as a school board thing, you just seem to all know what's going on.
I, I, I can see it as a four, because we.
We'll do four.
We're aware and.
All right, has established written procedures for conducting meetings which include ample provision of the public to be heard but prevents a single individual or group from discussions.
Five.
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 I'd have a four, but I could go with five without.
Fives.
After I read it again.
Right. Five.
As long as you don't get that gavel from what's his name.
Conducts its meeting facilities that allow for the division's business affairs to be conducted by the board and its administrative staff effectively.
Five.
Yeah, five. Select a chairperson on the basis of his or her ability to properly conduct a meeting rather than on seniority or rotation.
Obviously, a five.
Five.
Obviously.
Don't hurt your round, patting yourself on the back there, Mr. Chairman.
New items of a complex nature are not introduced for action if they are not listed on the agenda, but are presented for listing on a subsequent agenda.
Four or five?
I said four.
I said four.
I said a four, yeah.
Four or five? Fours?
Fours?
Sure.
Definitive action is withheld until asking if there's a staff recommendation in what it is.
We do that more, a lot, but I, I don't know, I think we should do it maybe more sometimes.
I, I agree, I, I had a three on this.
I had a three as well.
Yeah, I have three.
Four.
Question mark.
We'll go with three, three then?
Yep.
Care is used in criticizing a staff recommendation.
It's gonna be a four or five.
I had a four, I mean, again, it's not something that's really come up too much, so, I think we're doing a good job with that, is there any objection to a good job with that?
Nope.
Four. Four. The privilege of holding over matters for further study is not abused.
I did a four or five, I don't know.
I did a four, but really, that's what our parking lot is, right, it's, it's, but it's, we're not abusing it, we're making sure it's coming back, so, yeah, I think we're doing a good job with that, I mean, some, some boards, I think, will, will just keep putting difficult decisions off, and put it off, and put it off, you know, we don't do that, so.
That's a four?
Yeah. Each member makes a sincere effort to be informed on all agenda items prior to the meeting. I did four there, four.
I had a four as well.
I said a four.
Controversial, complex, or complicated matters are held over or placed on the agenda for discussion only prior to consideration for adoption.
Four or five?
I did three, because we don't specifically set out to do that, I think a lot of the times, I think we should be a little more formal about it.
I had a four, so.
I had a three.
Three.
Three point five?
Four or five?
You have four or five?
Three point seven. I don't know.
A three, three point eight seven, three and a half or four then?
Sure.
Would you say?
I said four, but anyway, yeah, three and a half, four.
Three and a half, five.
Three and a half, all right. Develop sound personnel policies involving the staff when appropriate.
A five?
I did a three, I don't recall involving the staff at all in our personnel.
Oh, involving the staff.
When appropriate.
Okay, maybe, so maybe it hasn't come up, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
I would say that, can we have, ask the administration?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just say five.
Five.
It's not your score.
It's your time to turn to judge us, which is, probably not, doesn't happen very often, right, so.
She's figured out how to do it already.
Vocally judge us, I should say. I'm sorry, so you had, what, four, five?
Five.
Five, I had a three, but.
I had a three.
I could be convinced.
I had a four.
I had a four.
I'm thinking of all the policies we do.
I think four is in the middle, and so.
Yeah.
Authorizes the employment or dismissal of staff members only upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
Five or five.
Yeah, so, for any reason, that's not a five.
Can't beat break your policy, wouldn't we?
Yep, makes provision for their complaints of employees to be heard and after full study, if staff dissatisfaction is found to exist, takes action to correct the situation through appropriate administrative channels.
You had four.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're doing a good.
I said four.
A good job. It hasn't come up much, I don't think, at least, not that we know of.
But we do have provisions in place on how.
We do, yeah. Receptive to suggestions for improvement of the school system.
Four.
Four, four, five.
I had four. So four. Encourages professional growth and increased competency through attendance of staff meetings, educational meetings, training on the job, salary increments recognized, training experienced beyond menful, minimal qualifications.
I got a five, and I wish, I wish we could have more professional development days.
I did three, and for that reason, kind of, I think, I think we're not.
No, if you think of it that way.
We don't really push that as much as possible.
I said four only from what I've listened to at meetings, but I would ask our administrators, the staff members.
What do these, what do you guys have first, then we'll ask them?
I, I had three, just feeling that we're doing an adequate job.
Right, adequate, okay. Miss Haderman?
I had four, but this is when I trailed off. They start talking about other things and I stop.
It looks like we have goodish, what do you guys think?
We put in the budget every year.
Well, you gotta look at what you have control over, right? So when you're talking about professional growth, how do you ensure that? You ensure that through negotiations, right? So you determine that this is what you get, so you do that, you, you have a.
You know, and that's true, our contract does recognize experience beyond minimal qualifications.
And I believe that if I ever came to you, like, let's say, um, you know, a key clerical staff was leaving and we were hiring somebody, I have a suspicion that if I asked if I could do a two-week overlap, you would say yes, you know, so for training, so.
I could be convinced of a four then there.
Have it in our budgets to allow them money to do certain things.
Makes the staff aware of the esteem in which it is held. I think we do an adequate job, I think we could do better.
Yeah.
Three, maybe.
Four.
Three, three.
I would agree with three.
Provides a written policy protecting the academic free, academic freedom of teachers. I put a two, just because I have no idea if we have such a policy.
I don't know why that's there, so I had to put a five.
I put a question mark.
Yeah, mine was a two question mark, so.
I had a question mark, it's like, if it's a policy and we have to follow it, so it's gotta be a five, right?
Well, we, I don't know if we have a policy on that, right? That's maybe something we could do.
What policy would that be?
It'd be an I policy, I'm looking it up right now, so just go on to the next one.
All right. Understands the instructional program and general restrictions imposed on it by legislator.
I had no idea.
All those things they sent us from the NH, you get them on your email, they tell you what's going on.
No, 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 this is.
Is that what that means?
Understands the instructional program, I assume that meant at our school.
Yeah, relationship to instructional.
And its relationship to these other, these other activities.
Yeah, I give myself a three, I could probably do.
I said three, four, only because you read them, sometimes if, I can say, what the hell are they talking about?
Right, that's true, we're not educators, so it's hard to get that sometimes, I mean, I'm sorry, not all of us are educators.
I'm a unique educator, you know, I don't know it all, I give us a three.
Three, three, sorry. Realistically faces, faces the community to support equality education for its children.
Four. Battles any budget meetings in the town meetings.
Sounds like a four.
Yeah, I said four.
Yeah.
You do better still, that's definitely an improvement. Resists the effect, the efforts of special interest groups to influence the instructional program if the effect would be detrimental to the students.
I think five.
Fives?
Five.
Four, but I think, okay, five. Encourages the participation of the professional staff and in certain instances, the public in the development of the curricula. Four, three, four, I could do better. I'm not really clear on.
I'm not so sure about the public.
What we've done to do anything with that.
I think the staff gets.
Right.
Time and stuff.
Three point five?
Yeah, three, five.
There was a public, there was a public forum for the strategic plan.
Right, but there was also, there was also some public involved a couple of years ago. Unless this is just for this past year.
This is just for this past year, yeah. Three, then, is that what?
Three, sir.
Yeah.
Three and a half, three? Weighs all decisions in terms of what is best for the students. I did three here, um, just because I don't know if I completely agree with this, because, I mean, determining what's best for the students is one thing, but determining what's best for the taxpayers is another thing, and we do think about that, and we should, so, I, I don't know that I think that I want a five here, you know?
Well, then again, the argument can be made that looking out for taxpayers is in the long term, looking out for the students, because if you're only one-sided, it's gonna get unbalanced, so.
I put a five.
I think. Everything, I think, the decisions we make have to be what's best for the students, that's just how I feel.
I said four.
I mean, obviously, we're not going to like, we do everything within reason, we're not like, trying to spend a million dollars extra every year to make everything perfect.
From what I've observed over the years and coming in especially this year, you look at, okay, we want this new program, we need this piece of equipment, we need this. You do your very best to try and minimize the financial impact and still provide what the students need. So in my mind, I would give you guys a five.
So I did.
I gave us a five.
You gave us a five?
I said four, so.
Four.
I was thinking.
Four, four and a half.
I think we always can do, well, I've said a million times. You weigh, you weigh.
Four and a half, so four and a half, unless there's any objections on that one. Did you find that policy?
No.
Almost done. Provides a policy outlining the district's educational objectives against which instructional program can be evaluated. We have that policy?
Policy IL, evaluation of the instructional program.
That's a five then.
All right.
The foot long.
Keeps abreast of new development and course content and teaching techniques through attendance and participation in school board association conferences and meetings of other educational groups, and by reading of selected books and periodicals.
I gave a three, because I could do better.
I gave a three too, I think we don't do enough of that. I knew a couple, but not nearly enough. Equates the income and expenditures of the district in terms of the quality of education that should be provided and the ability of the community to support such a program.
That was the discussion you just had.
Right.
Yep.
Four.
I thought a five.
Four point five then.
What do you guys think? I had a three, I think we're, I think we're doing an adequate job, I don't know that we're doing a great job, but I could be convinced of a four.
Sure.
I mean.
It's about the time that I did not get to finish.
All right, well, it might take a few more seconds, I don't use them, lovely little stuff. Takes the leadership in suggesting and securing community support for additional financing when necessary. I mean, who else is gonna do it?
Four.
Yeah, four. Establishes written policies which will ensure efficient administration of purchasing, accounting, and payroll procedures in the risk management program. I had a four, but this is probably a five, we have.
You have all those things in place.
Yeah, four, I said four, five, it's okay.
Fives are great, all right.
Establish our written policy.
Yeah. Authorizes individual budgetary allotments and special non-budget expenditures only after considering the total needs of the district.
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Makes provisions for long-range planning for acquisition of sites, additional facilities, and plant maintenance.
Yeah, we did a.
You have a reserve.
Yeah, we're CIP, we have our reserves.
Yep, I give a five.
I kind of had a question mark here, but four or five?
Hold on, hold on.
All right, four and a half?
We want a site by the lake next time, like Cobra.
Personal qualities, each board, each board member exhibits a sincere and unselfish interest in public education and the contribution it makes to the development of children. If you're not giving yourself a five here, then.
I gave myself a five.
In the wrong building.
High quality, I guess.
A knowledge of the community in which the school system is designed to serve.
I gave myself a five.
I had a four, but, you know, I don't know everything, you know, I know what I know, but.
I have too, way too much about this.
Five then?
I gave a four.
Four sounds.
I said four.
Four and a half. Four and a half. The ability to think independently, to grow in knowledge, and rely on fact rather than prejudice, and a willingness to hear and consider all sides of a controversial question.
Oh, man, after my outburst yesterday.
Last night, yeah.
I wasn't there.
After. This is, this is nothing about that, this isn't saying be civil, this is saying the ability to think independently. I did a five, I think we're, I think we're doing good here, we're not being led around by anybody, I'm okay with a five.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give myself, I need to improve it.
Four and a half. A deep sense of loyalty, loyalty to other board members and respect for group decisions cooperatively reached.
For this board, I'd say.
Yeah, well, this is, so this year, you guys have been great. Respect for and interest in the people and ability to get along with them.
I'd say a five.
Yeah.
Say a four, because I don't get along with everybody all the time, but.
Yeah, you give me a hard time.
I haven't given you a hard time before. Not this year, though.
No, not this year.
Fives, then?
Oh, well, so, let me back up for a second, I thought this was still just talking amongst board members, so, I mean.
People.
No, it's about ability, ability to get along with people, I don't know.
Get along with everybody.
Until you piss me off. We can do a five then, fine. Desire to work through defined channels of authority and responsibility.
I gave myself a zero.
That's, that's what you deserve, a zero, yeah. I think everything else, I think we've been doing good with that, though, I think that's definitely a five, five material. A willingness to devote the necessary time to become an effective board member.
Give myself a four.
I did three, I mean, I think, again, I could go more.
I would go with three, I mean, I'd.
I think we could.
It was our full-time job, it would be a deal, but it's not.
Right, it's not, so.
Be a well-oiled machine.
Let's say three point five.
Three and a half for that one.
All right, let's not.
That's true.
Let's go over each one and review.
We do need to go back to the number thirty-five.
What was in the cookies he was in?
Provides a written policy protecting the academic freedom of teachers, if we find the policy. No, I think that's a one.
Which one?
Number thirty-five, provides a written policy protecting the academic freedom of teachers.
May I make a suggestion to the, um, policy committee that we start thinking about that?
Yep. I mean, the other, one thing to do too, is, what I think we should do is revise this whole checklist and see if it really, you know, it was, it was made what, I was gonna say what it was made, sometime ago. Right, and then maybe we should review this next year or whatever, to make sure it fits with.
Two thousand fourteen.
Not me. Mr. Ruth was.
You did that.
You're like, yep.
Right, right, right. All right, you have.
Those questions are there.
You have one thing you need? Okay, yeah, we'll figure. Okay. End of new business, sorry that took so long. Goals are never fun. And we'll get right back to them for those that are coming back to us next year, I suspect the chair of next year's board is going to want to get right on goals. So keep that in mind, or moving forward, whoever that may be. No more new business? Is there any committee reports?
Uh, we didn't have any policy meeting this, this week, I don't know why.
Fair enough. It was just vacation, I'll give you guys a break. Nothing here, no?
Uh, we have safety coming up next Tuesday, right?
You, you missed our meeting. No, I'm not, I'm not, you last, did you miss the last meeting? No, oh, okay. You guys met with the, the Unions today?
Yep.
How'd that, how'd all that go?
It was a pretty, um, light-hearted conversation, I think. I missed the beginning of the meeting, actually, so.
You didn't miss much, you really didn't.
There was talk about how a lot of their technology concerns had improved.
Oh, good.
So.
Yeah, there was something they'd brought up before, so, yeah.
Copier, printer, toner, things working properly, everything was better, there's concern about bus behavior, I guess. They're talking about trying to figure out a way to kind of maybe provide, uh, maybe they had talked to you about providing some kind of training with Dale to the bus drivers in some capacity, because a lot, you know, they're trained to be bus drivers, they're not trained to be.
Yep, we've been addressing that, we've talked about it.
Seat belts.
And then just kind of like, yeah, we talked about seat belts too, all sorts of things.
I was just gonna say, you have talked about tasers.
Not tasers. And then just kind of increasing, um, I don't know, the public's relations with the PTA, and getting more community involved in the school, and things like that, kind of throwing around ideas, that was it.
Okay. There was a technology committee, meeting I missed, so I don't have any update from that, but I don't think there was much. You, oh, you were there. Anything interesting at the technical? Steve wasn't there, it was that one.
Oh, I wasn't there either, we were dealing with a student issue.
Okay, so, wait a minute, yeah.
Can I just go back to the community? Could some, I'm trying to establish relationships with like, various community organizations. So if somebody could, and you will know this better than I, because I don't live here, but like Rotary, Alex Moose.
Public Lex Club, Home and Club.
Definitely.
If somebody could give me a list, maybe just shoot me some ideas.
I said Columbus.
Right, things like that, and then, as part of my goal for next year, I want to start fostering some partnerships with businesses and organizations that will benefit our kids and our volunteers, so that would be helpful to me. Because I don't necessarily know, um, all your community organizations.
Yeah.
So that, I said Columbus has reached out to us, the PD, numerous times, wanting to give baskets of food to people that are in need. And we're like, well, we're not really that type of person that, like, if we tell you that that person's in need, that's kind of like, but the school knows people that would.
Well, we could shelter it.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, right.
So I could get you that guy's name.
That kind of stuff, but I'm also looking for like, um, you know, some business expertise that we might be able to share with students.
Like internships type stuff?
Not necessarily internships, but more, more like.
Rotary Club, that's about the only one of those type of clubs.
You have Rotary?
Town, don't they?
I don't know, there is a.
Rotary store, huh?
It's crank bullers. A crank buller? I mean, it's an organization, I mean.
It's an organization, but I.
I don't know.
Would not recommend. Be careful.
It's not, yeah.
Only because I'm not sure quite where that, that, that would come through.
So it's just.
Small town, there aren't many of those type of, the Masons, I think, still meet.
Yeah, the Masons do, yeah.
That, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Why don't you email, if you have, if you have a contact or.
Yeah, if you can think of anything, just shoot me an email.
Send, send the email to the superintendent, and we'll.
Right.
Explore things there, if you go through it. All right, I don't think we have any other committee reports. Little business, we have a strategic plan checklist in our packet. I don't know if people have the patience and stamina to go through it tonight, so if you guys want to just kind of, get over it and get back to it, if we could.
Conversation at our last meeting, I believe, and that.
Just to backtrack Scott, doesn't the Rotary come to the school and help with eye tests and everything still?
They don't help with the eye test, they have offered glasses for students.
Somebody, so it would.
At center school they did, I don't know.
I know they used to.
Yeah, they did.
All right, if anyone has any comments on this, we'll move on to the parking lot items. This is something that will be great to look at when we're trying to set our goals next year, so. Parking lot items, we have our newsletter ongoing, school safety is ongoing, competency presentation, it's good for March. Not gonna happen in March, when might that happen? April first.
Hi.
We can adjust this, it's fine, I'm just curious, we can, we can throw April or May in here and then revisit.
Well, the original plan was, I did the first competency presentation overview, and then the next one was going to come from your curriculum director, and so I can't answer that question right now.
Okay. It being March, then why don't we just update this to April, and we can.
Yep.
So it doesn't fall off the radar, basically, we'll come back. Strategic plan, planning we have in our packet, lizard bags we're supposed to talk about in April. Internet video discussion, did you want to say a couple things about that? We did start looking into that a little bit.
So, Mr. Byrne sort of took the lead on that, because he was at your last meeting, and, um, so I'll just read you the email that he sent me, so I could update you. I spoke to Gary about the, the live streaming, the live streaming option, having him upload the videos on YouTube. Gary thought the streaming of the videos using the Northwood School's infrastructure would be easily achieved, he just needed to be linked to the school's server, which is something he thought Steve could arrange. Gary was not sure if he would be able to upload the videos to YouTube due to his home internet speeds, he was also unable to determine a cost or charge at this time. I also spoke with Steve, and he informed me that he had set up a process to stream live videos in the past. He also felt as though he could work with Gary to make this happen, but he would need a little time to reacquaint, reacquaint himself with the process. He thought he might be able to have it ready by the next meeting, that's pretty bold.
So. Gary, weren't you talking with Steve before the meeting?
Yes.
And that you guys found the line that you could use?
Yes, um, we figured we could feed it into his office here, or right to his outlet right here, and then Steve would take care of logistics. But we could only do these meetings.
Right.
We couldn't do the other ones, that would have to be.
Right.
Take care of, that would give us a live, well, he says we can hit a live feed.
Live feed, is this something you guys are, would be interested in?
Transparency.
So I mean, as far as.
Feed of the school board meeting?
Yep.
Hey, it's great.
We got any budget money for makeup and everything?
It doesn't sound like makeup.
Not that much money.
Let's continue to look into this, and see if we can livestream it.
Mr. John, could you have Steve continue to work on it, tell him by the next meeting is a little ambitious.
Yeah, it's.
Probably before the next.
As far as the YouTube stuff, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to continue doing that, so we can just put that in the back burner for now.
I mean, we're talking live stream through a YouTube channel, or like, are we talking?
I think it would be, I would think it would be some, I don't know exactly what, where it would be, but I think it would be something like a Facebook Live type thing.
Not, but not through the, like, the local cable channel, or?
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
I think that's.
It would be an energy livestream.
That's fine.
Use the server here, so that if people want to, you know, watch it, they can just.
Yeah, like, link to this web, the north, yep, the website or something like that, yeah.
So that as you're having the meeting, someone at home could go online and watch.
Yep, yeah.
Then why would anybody come to your meetings? One of the things that you.
Was encouraging people to come to meetings. Well, they would come to the meetings, they don't come to meetings anyways.
Yeah, if they wanna talk.
Yeah, they don't come into the meetings anyway, but also, it's what happened in other towns, that they do it live, is they show up halfway through the meeting, because they were listening, and they didn't like something, like.
Yeah, right, so maybe, right.
I've heard that, and I've never seen it happen.
Oh, I.
And I met those meetings.
Yeah.
So, I think it's important for everybody to realize that society and the way we operate has sort of changed, right?
Yeah.
Especially when it comes to raising children, um, school-aged children and parents having the time to come and participate. And by definition of a meeting that occurs in public, there wouldn't be a lot of participation anyway, other than public comment.
Right.
Right? You're not gonna answer questions back and forth anyway. So, I think that for, um, a, a lot of people with families, you know, it's not like when I was a kid, when I used to go home from school and do a sport, and then go home and just be home, right? They're out doing another sport, or they're doing a community things, and, and families are busy, so, um, I think that's where your participation's at, is that people are just busy, so if you can provide them access to the information.
Yeah, they can watch while they're cooking dinner or something.
Even after it's live, it'll, it'll stay there, right?
Yeah.
It'll just be there, and then.
Even after.
You can make comments on it.
Yeah, it'll just stay there, and then they can go watch it whenever.
I don't know if it's live, if that's the case, we can find.
Well, no, I'm just saying, it would be live initially.
Yes.
And then it's, it's like Facebook, if you do Facebook Live, where it just goes into.
It depends on the technology we use and stuff that, yeah, Gary, do you know?
Yeah, we need a seven-second delay for.
I think the direction. Is, it's streamed to the server, and they can access the live stream, and then later on, it's, it's being streamed to the server and going on a hard drive. And then they just give them a particular, go here and.
So it'll stay there permanently, kind of thing.
Okay.
I would think that a server would have.
Can be archived and stuff.
So maybe, so maybe that'd be something, maybe that'd be something we could do, like, then we might not even need the YouTube feeds, right? If it's all, it's all in place, yeah.
You could call probably most of the schools around us, high schools, are streaming basketball games, every college is streaming stuff.
Yeah, let's move forward. April, we'll leave it as April, because we'll, we'll bring it back soon, probably, after, after Gary and Steve maybe talk or whatnot. Mat for gym. For May.
Oh, yeah, we were waiting for more, like, uh.
Information on a rubber mat for in front of the.
The thing we got the samples for last time.
Yeah.
Right, what new information were we looking for for that?
To get the right length, if, if, the first, the first things we had was like fifty-six bucks, I mean, a fifty-six-foot roll at five or six hundred bucks, and you need two, well, then you're gonna be cutting off about thirty feet that you don't need, so there's no sense paying. So we wanted, if you could get one, measure the gym, and get one length, and just pay for what you need. And then, maybe there are other places that, just to check prices, we just had a, a rough estimate, which was good.
Just leave it on here, then, we'll bring it back when we get better.
We need it by next, next December.
Timeline. We are in March. Obviously, we're only gonna do half of these things in the first meeting in March, and the other half will be the second meeting.
Spring coaching list is done.
It's done.
Change the school day to junior by three thirty.
So that's if we're changing the school day, we didn't inform them, but I don't think we have any plans for that, so we're, we're fine.
CBA contract discussion.
If you were gonna change hours of the school, we're not doing that anyway. Spring coaching, you just.
Bring board feedback.
CBA contract.
Yeah, we can do it both.
You could probably, in March, take out the non, a non-CBA contract, did you already do? Gotta wait and see if it passes.
No, non-CBA, doing that discussion.
The other.
Yeah, they're like the administrators and stuff.
Yep.
Yep. So I think we're all set, I think we're looking good here. Anything else is gonna be after the new board members, so. Okay. Future agenda items, um, two weeks, March twenty-one is our next meeting. Whenever in doubt, we will revisit the appropriate B policies, board governance, we will reorg. We will, so we will do, be doing committee, um, assignments, so, maybe take a look at that and see, for those coming back, and see what you'd be interested in. Staff nominations, I'll start with that. And that's what I have, obviously.
You have three things or two?
Well, I just added another thing, so, the policies.
Yeah.
The honor policies and the B policies, staff nominations, reorg, just in general, right, that's gonna be the first thing, it's the reorg.
Right.
And then, uh, committee assignments, which is technically part of reorg.
Yeah. So if we have the honor policies, I'll put them in there, if we don't, we're gonna have to.
That's fine.
I get to chair your first meeting for the first action, and then your new chair takes over after that.
Yep.
So, you know, never done it before, so.
That would be easy, nothing to do.